Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of June 3rd, 2020. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance
Okay, we got double.
We've done an echo.
Hello Christine, hello.
Hello.
Okay. Is that echo gone away?
Yes.
Alright, very good. Thank you all. We, I'll show the agenda for this evening. For the folks at home. We'll be discussing an update on that Stony Brook Culvert project, essentially a a bond resolution to increase the funding necessary to complete that project. A resolution to award the electric vans. We've essentially done all the work associated with that. We just needed New York State Department of Transportation to sign off on that. They have, and thanks to Chris Shaw for, for help with that. We have a resolution which affirms our budget adjustments that we made at the previous town board meeting related to reductions in staffing. We finally have a resolution to adopt the social media policy, something that's been batted about for quite some time and we had some slight changes that were asked of at the last meeting. We also have a resolution to approve some change orders to our recreation facilities, our projects, and we are going to set a public hearing, hopefully for the next meeting on the CPF Mosher Family Farm Application. It's a project to protect the Southern Gateway Route 9. Lastly, a discussion on, beginning discussion, there is an application in front of DEC. It's a proposed expansion of mining activities by Red Wing Processing, bringing in materials to their site, which is just north of the Red Hook border and much of the traffic impact will be felt by residents and commercial properties within the town of Red Hook. And then we have our board and department reports and committee reports. In addition to that. So for announcements, one of the things that we would like the folks to know at home, we mentioned at the last meeting is that it's looking more and more likely. In fact, now we know for sure that our summer rec program will not take place this year. We know that folks will be disappointed. But as you'll see when we get to the topic related to recreation facilities, we won't have our park ready, we think, until half of that summer rec program would have taken place. So in addition to all of the planning and new requirements by Department of Health in order to ensure that everything from, you know, the playground to the restrooms will be available and clean for those using it constantly throughout the day. So no summer rec programs. We did remove that as one of many budget adjustments that we did at our last meeting. But I do want to tell you while we're on that topic that I did do a site visit with our rec director and commission just two days ago, and I think people will be very pleased when the project is finished. It's really looking terrific. The, the fields of the Challenger multi-use field, middle field with professional lighting and the batting cage. I mean, it's just, it's gonna look spectacular. I think, I hope everyone is happy when they see it. Obviously, folks are very happy about our tennis courts and our pickleball courts and our playground, and then to have a new basketball court included as well. They are doing work on the paths now to increase ADA accessibility. We don't expect fencing to come in until, you know, quite a ways into the summertime. They're replacing all of that damaged fencing, if you're familiar with the north end of, of the recreation park. And so on Rec Park West, they continue to work on that. There's a beautiful path now that extends from the small amount of parking that is to be constructed or is constructed now on Rec Park West, but just a beautiful stone dust pass. I, I think folks will be very happy with that. And that enters into the now owned by Winnicke Properties and our cooperative venture into figuring out how to do our village-to-village trails through those properties. As a reminder, another update, Town Hall, access to the public for Town Hall. Town Hall will be closed again in the month of June. We have been asked to develop reopening plans, which include in some cases, some construction, you know, how to put a Plexi glass and so on and so forth in the various offices and how to keep it so that there's only one individual in an office at a time as part of these plans. And so we're really thinking that, you know, Town Hall is not going to open to the public until, and at least Phase 4, and that right now, I'm looking at the cycle, July 7th might be the earliest that the fourth phase occurs in this area. Courts have been granted permission next week to begin opening, but you'll find that they won't be doing that until much later in the summertime, in part because most of the courts exist within the same space as a Town Hall or a Village Hall, and it's impossible to, you know, a portion of those two facilities that are under one building. Those are the announcements, but I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to comment on what has transpired, what we've all watched on television or on videos, and that is the murder of George Floyd and what that has done to really ignite already sensitive and already volatile emotions that we all have surrounding two systemic issues, hatred and violence in our society. And I know that there are plenty of marches going on. There is one, I understand, planned for Red Hook this Friday at 1 o'clock. There's one occurring right now in the city of Kingston, and of course, we support all peaceful protests. But I can tell you, just on a personal note, and I'm sure the Bills who may be of the same age or, or more than I am, remember the days when many of us marched in 1968 as a little child. I remember my mother bringing my brother and I to, to march in, in Washington for civil rights, but here we are 52 years later and people are still marching, and the issues are still the same. We can argue that there's been improvements, and I don't think that I'm an expert in that area, so I won't comment on whether in fact that's the case, but what's clear is we need to do more, and we need to do more than just express our voice. We need to take actions. And I think that, you know, people think here in Red Hook, we live in paradise, and we do, but it's not perfect, and we don't have a bubble around us, and we have had incidents. The last one that I can recall was not that many months ago, over on the Bard Campus, where actually Bard faculty, people of color were insulted and things were thrown from vehicles, and it was all racially, you know, sensitive, you know, activities. And those were local residents, those were Red Hook residents who committed those acts. And so, you know, we've always believed that we can't solve problems, global problems, unless each and every one of us do what we can, and certainly on a local level of government, we have to do what we can. And so what I've done is asked Councilman Testa Jacob, who during his day job works to ensure civil rights compliance, and Councilman Hamel, who's got decades worth of law enforcement experience, both on the federal level and state level, to work together and to organize a task force to take a look at some of the policies that we have in place in our community, some of the educational efforts that are already existing, and take a look at what we could do in order to not only make sure that our community is inclusive and inviting to those, those of us who look a little differently than most of us or have, you know, other characteristics of diversity, but how we can celebrate that diversity. And so let's, let's see what we can do, and I thank you both for offering to spearhead this. I know it'll take some time, and you'll need to meet with a lot of our local leaders, our mayors, our police, or our school, and, and so on and so forth, but we look forward to the work that you'll be doing, and I thank you, and for the folks at home. You should know that we're very fortunate to have these individuals on our town board. They have a background that I think will be very helpful for us going forward with this, this issue. Okay, that said, shall we jump into our first item on the agenda? And let's see if we can do this. Alright. Alright, very good. So the first item is the Stony Brook Culvert update. We have a couple of resolutions that you've been given related to the corrective work that needs to be done. One resolution is to supplement the bond resolution to allow for more funding to be allocated towards the project. And the second one is to authorize the award of the contract. And what you have in your communications before we take up those resolutions, and I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it, is a letter, a single source letter is what it's referred to by Crawford and Associates, and essentially it speaks to the issues related to the corrective work, who was interviewed and contacted in order to advise on that work and see if they had the capabilities to address the corrective measures. As you know, at our meeting, I think a couple meetings ago, you authorized me to seek a second opinion of the options that were presented to us by the engineer. We've had a response to that second opinion, and then we've had the response by the engineer to some sort of detail-oriented questions that were sent to them. The upshot of the adjustment and the costs associated with it is that the project, including some contingency, could cost as much as $468,000. And so we have a contract for TMP Techno Metal Post Hudson Valley, who will be doing the work associated with adjusting the one end of the Culvert structure. And we also have a change order to FastTrax, because now FastTrax will need to come back in with their de-watering equipment, and so they've given us a, a weekly price. And so depending upon whether or not we need the full two weeks, that remobilization and all the equipment generators, pumps and whatever, that would be another $37,000 included for that. Do you all have any questions about the materials that you've been given? I know it's been several weeks now you've been getting all this. So any questions? Okay. Alright, so let's take up the first resolution.
Actually, for Robert for one minute, I had to unmute before I could talk. I didn't, did I miss in here? Because I didn't see anything about when the, when this project could get started again in the materials that we have.
Oh yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, just so you know, yes, the project, they've actually penciled in July. The contractors, they're leaving their schedules open, and the idea is it was always, the corrective measure was always targeted for July because it's hoped that the water levels would be low and we wouldn't experience the problem that we experienced last time where we had this tremendous storms and flooding occur during the middle of the project. And the water level is actually low now. The engineer was out two days ago. So July, yeah. Depending upon how quickly we can get the contracts back, the performance bond, so on and so forth.
Thank you.
They've got it penciled in, and, and they do believe that the work will take approximately a week. There'll be a mobilization of a couple of days, get the water level down, do the job, then FastTrax has some work that was left over from the original part of the contract that they need to do. So, you know, I would say maybe we're looking at two weeks from start to finish, but I don't want to jinx it. Projects had enough jinxing. So alright, why don't we take up Resolution Number 21? Dated June 3rd, 2020. It's a supplemental bond resolution. Amending and supplementing the Resolution Number 84 dated December 11th, 2018, as amended by an amendment to Bond Resolution Number 60, 20, June 18th, 2019, authorizing a bridge replacement on Stony Brook Road, an estimated increased maximum cost of $468,200 as the maximum cost. And so you know, we have $308,000 allocated towards this project, so we're looking at $160,000 that would need to come from our reserve fund balance. So when we're talking about, you know, monies as we go forward with our projects and we watch what's happening with the economy, know that we're, we're pulling down those reserves that you said we needed for these purposes.
If I could just clarify, the, the bond resolution is there because one of the things that's in the original bond resolution we used to borrow funds for the project is an estimated maximum cost of the project. And while the resolution does not increase the borrowing amount authorized, it increases the estimated maximum amount only.
Yes, it's an annoying feature of this process is that when you, even by changing just the project dollar amount, you have to go through this extensive change to, to the bond resolutions. Okay. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 21. And click on.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Christine Kane. Okay, all in favor? So we have those two, myself, I, Jacob.
Hi.
I, Bill O'Neill.
Hi.
Okay, very good. We now have Resolution Number 22, and that's to award of contract for the helical pile installation and authorizing a change order for the contract regarding Town of Red Hook Stony Brook Road Culvert Project. And so what this does is award to TMP as we spoke about, and also amends, it's a change order for the FastTrack contract. Okay, is, would somebody like to make a motion to?
Move.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Jacob?
Hi.
Bill Hamel? Hi.
Hi, muted.
Hi, there we go. I, thank you very much. I, myself.
And I.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Alright, Resolution Number 23. We're on item number two. This has been another one of these projects that has just taken such a long time, and obviously COVID didn't help. But one of the few programs that apparently still has money in it in New York State is this ZEV program, this electric vehicle program that we would be tapping into. And as you know, we were awarded $119,000 by the federal government to have these electric vans to assist our seniors and those with physical and other challenges moving around our community. And so we did all the work associated with this. The last thing to do was to, prior to having this resolution, was to make sure that DOT reviewed the submissions and were fine with it. We supplied them with all the information that they needed, and so we have Resolution Number 23 dated.
Excuse me, Robert, you might want to put it up on the screen because you're still in the.
Thank you. That would help.
Thanks.
And unmute everybody.
Okay. I think, I think you're on, you're unmuted, aren't you? Let's see. I think everybody is unmuted.
Jacob isn't.
Yeah, I'm good. I can unmute myself whenever I need to talk.
Well, that's right. Everybody controls their mute. Everybody controls them, yeah. Okay. Okay, we've done that. Hang on. Here we go. Here's Resolution Number 23. You can see that?
Yep.
Okay. Authorizing the award of a contract for two electric vans, and it speaks to all the funding sources associated with it. And so we are awarding at the recommendation of the Energy Committee of United Access of New York LLC in the amount of $326,898, almost all of which is funding associated with grants. And it does have a remainder for our contribution of $51,506. And this has been a long time waiting. I know the seniors keep asking me, when are we going to get those vans? Because many of them need to get back and forth to places like the Community Center and elsewhere. And obviously, when and if we all can get out and around, I think that, and do it safely, I think this is going to be a real benefit to that population. So who would like to move Resolution Number 23?
Some moved.
Okay, Christine.
Second.
Second, Bill O'Neill. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? I?
I.
Jacob? Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Okay, so that's all. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving to the third item on the agenda is a resolution which confirms our budget adjustments that were made at the May 12th meeting. It's a reduction in staffing. We spoke at length about anticipated shortfalls in revenue. I don't think we delved into too much of the potential for increased expenses, but you know, we can anticipate that those are going to be thrown on top of it, things like pension funds. We've been fortunate that the Comptroller's Office hasn't asked for large increases into pension funds. It's quite likely that that's going to start changing now. Of course, none of us have a great view into the future about what, you know, things like the stock market or other investments that the fund is included in. But we have seen already, we have evidence, I think we, we spoke about declining revenue. We have echo there. Can we? Sorry, can somebody check to see if they've got a computer or something else on? Alright, well, I'll just try and walk through it. So for example, April. So April, the state of New York had a decline in revenue of 68% of all revenue. The county sales tax in April, we don't have the May figures yet, the county sales tax, two-thirds of what it was in January. So, and that is profound for us because a large portion of our sales tax revenue is the dollar amount that is above. I'm gonna mute you all for a second to see who's got the sound. Theresa, it's in your office. For some reason, there's an echo. That's gone away. Okay. So, a sales tax revenue, two-thirds in, in April, and I was starting to. Yeah, it is. Okay, two-thirds of the revenue. So it's, it's significant because the way the sales tax was restructured in 2013, we get a smaller portion of the initial 25 million, then we get a larger portion of the increase associated with that. So every dollar that's reduced from the total pot has a more significant impact upon us. It's based upon population. And just so you know, we're looking now, we're seeing our revenues, they're drying up and all the things you might expect. Obviously, there's no tickets being issued. We're not getting the interest rates that we used to, just one-fourth of that. And so we made the budget adjustments at our last meeting with the idea you had asked me to come up with around a 75% staffing with, with the notion that, you know, we, we may experience a, a small reduction in services, although I have to say most of the departments have already been working towards reduced staffing, and they report that it's working out fine, whether it's the assessor or a building or whatever. But I recognize that there are other departments where it may not be as easy to, to work with less staff. So we have articulated in this resolution exactly what those reductions are, and they are listed for you here. Everything from the elimination of two positions, MEO, one account clerk purchasing, one senior clerk bookkeeping and feels she does not need debt coming in anymore. A sole assessor, reduced hours there, that, that was a desirable thing for her part. She does not feel she needs a deputy assessor more than one day a week to come in. And then in the building department, further reduction, so municipal code enforcement inspector, that's Bob Fennell, down to 10 hours per week, and building inspector two budgeted, which is John Fenton, seven and a half hours per week. And then a deputy town clerk to a halftime position for 15 hours per week. There's also additional lines in, in that individual, which will make it to almost 20 hours a week. And then Secretary Special District Highway to six hours per week. And then obviously, we made reductions in the summer recreation program, leaving a little money in that line because we may need to have staff to sanitize and staff to monitor the park. So when the park is in fact ready, even though we don't have a program, we may need to have some individuals there. We removed the funding for a part-time clerk of the Justice. Um we uh removed the funding for a part-time clerk of the justice uh court. And uh those changes uh or that change was was fine um to uh Judge Jonah who had made that request. Um you did receive some correspondence from our highway superintendent um talking about um concerns that she has. About the uh reduction in um, you know, in the staffing and again, you know, going back to the issue of whether or not our residents might experience. Reduction in in services and uh we did speak about that at the last meeting. We may in fact, um you know, as town hall begins to open. We may have to look at something other than a five-day uh work week or five-day access to town hall. And so I would, you know, ask you uh, you know, when the time comes, we'll take a look at what our staffing is and and what might be appropriate. To provide uh the kind of service that um our residents will need from us, but also the kind of service that fits with the staffing that we. Have under this um sort of new uh reduced level. And uh you'll see this happening more and more. We may be a little ahead of other communities, although I notice um. In some of our neighboring communities, they are not rehiring when they've lost um, you know, some of their staff right now. And um so that's uh, that's what we have for resolution number. Twenty four, I believe it is. Okay.
Can I say something please?
Uh sure, uh Teresa also has her hand up. Or would you like to go first Sue or Teresa? Would you like to go?
Sure, um.
Sue, you wanna go first?
Yes, uh the way this whole thing happened was really um a huge slap in the face. The town has been through difficult times before and every department got together. We worked out our budgets, we didn't take um raises and we worked through it together. We were not even included. I had no clue. I was blindsided that they were taking my deputy away. I'm the town clerk, also the tax collector, the water rents collector, which makes this an extremely busy office. And um I just really, after twenty one years here, not to have been included. In any of this, um because I have a few suggestions on how you can save money. Um, you know, we. Spend a lot of money around here. There's a a TV that could get returned that's been sitting in the um supervisor's office. That was purchased for one committee. Now that was a real waste of taxpayer money and it's still sitting there. But rather than returning that, we're going to eliminate workers. That does not make sense to me. That not make sense. And it seems like it's all those little, little, little things that just add up. And there was no respect for me. I feel like I'm being targeted as a woman elected official. And I also believe that this is also happening to the highway supervisor. I asked for a meeting after I was blindsided. I sent a message to all the town board members. And I did not get one reply from anybody, nobody. Now that's really, that's really an insult. And feeling like information is not coming to me, it's being withheld. You know, they say that the town clerk, and I will read from the town clerk book here. That the town clerk's office is frequently considered the center of town government. It is only the office which is responsible for recording activities of the town government. But it is the central place in which are filed the documents and papers vital for lives of the townspeople. I'm sorry, I'm shaking right now. Um. This office in the past has been very instrumental in welcoming. The public in getting all information that we can give them. Information is withheld and has been withheld. For the last few years with the town uh in the town clerk office. Um it's only when. Um somebody feels that I'm allowed to see it uh instead of the way it has always been. I understand that the supervisor felt and had remarked to some people that. The town clerk had too much power. Now, I don't know what he means by.
Sue, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop you. Um uh I I appreciate your your.
And you know what, Robert? Alls I wanted to do was have a meeting privately with the town board. And you didn't even give me the respect for that. That harassment to me. That's harassment.
I'm sorry, let's, we're gonna have to move on on to Teresa. I did call you the following day and I I think that, you know, it's very clear you hung up.
Right, right. You called me, you blindsided me, yes, and I was not very pleasant on the phone to you because. I got the agenda tonight at five o'clock. The special meeting notice that should have been out in the paper, um it was sent to me at quarter of twelve today. However, I'm allowed to be in the building till eleven thirty, so how does that work?
I think I think there's more hours for the town clerk's office uh today than than to twelve, but I thank you for your.
No, now you also happen to send out everybody's schedule like nine thirty Sunday night, Monday morning at eight o'clock. There's no respect, Robert. You have kept your two staff members working on restaurant lists for the covert virus. Take a look at our website.
Sue, I'm sorry, but we're gonna need to move on and give Teresa a a chance to speak.
Right, and I am done. I'm done with non-respect from this town board.
Okay, thank you Sue. Teresa, did you want to uh add to your comments? You put your written comments on your concerns about um reductions in in your department.
Basically, uh I don't understand why this is being done now instead of during a regular um budget process that's coming up in a month or two. Um I don't, I I I think that you have a responsibility to properly notify the residents um of. A situation that could compromise their safety um this winter, as is done during the town budget process when you have a public hearing. Um, I'm not sure about the uh union negotiations that haven't taken place. Um my understanding is that when you have layoffs with a union shop, that you have to negotiate the terms of the layoff. And uh I don't know where the money is that was taken out of the um healthcare line. And the uh personnel line to cause this shortfall that would force me to lay off people. Um my understanding is that the money that was budgeted last year for the highway department. Is still in the highway department lines, but it was just moved out of the employee lines and I had offered to um. Give that financial relief to the town board after I was told that the money was moved. And it's similar to Sue's situation where um there was no meeting of department heads to even understand that this may happen at all. And I found out about it at a town board meeting and I'm an elected official and I shouldn't be. Left out of these conversations and brought in after the fact. This is the first time I've had a chance to actually speak in public and you're about to make a resolution to lay off two full-time highway workers. And and as Sue said, you know, we're women elected officials, our departments have been hit the hardest. And you may not think that, but it's actually on paper. So, you know, these are my concerns. I I've just felt bullied um personally. And I haven't had the chance to address anybody. And phone calls, emails, silence. So, you know, I have a certain amount of authority under highway law. I haven't had the opportunity to research it. I had asked to talk to the attorneys and I reached out to um the labor attorney today. Because of the pandemic, uh people are not able to get back to me, so it just feels like it's very rushed. And I can't see the justification in my budget for something that may happen next year. When I have not only enough money in my unexpended funds that can be um given to the payroll and the health insurance. But we also have a healthy fund balance. And and you talk about drawing on fund balances, they're savings accounts for emergencies. And I consider this an emergency. So, you know, my my thought would be, let's go through the normal budget process. Let's have the input of the public on these decisions. And let's have the understanding of the people who haven't had the time to go through winters and emergencies, Irene, Stella. You know, it really will have a big impact and you may think it's a a small reduction, but I don't want people to find out the hard way. The hindsight is twenty twenty.
Okay. Uh Teresa, thank you very much for your comments and thank you for uh your correspondence as well. So I just want to address a a couple of the things that I heard. Um first of all, you know, uh the town governments are charged with making these very diff- difficult decisions, staffing being one of them. Oftentimes you have time to move sort of slowly and more calculated. And then you have situations like this where you have a sudden shock to the economy that is going to be dramatic. And um you have to respond quickly, not only for the benefit of the taxpayers. Who are paying for a level of staffing that it looks like we can no longer sustain. And we were having problems sustaining some of these levels of staffing with the increased labor costs to begin with. So we are acting as quickly as possible, not only to the benefit of the taxpayer. But also because there are in place now, right now, for at least a short period of time. Extended um programs to assist the employees who have a reduction in hours. In fact. There was some study that said two thirds of the people who were either furloughed or reduced staffing or laid off. Are actually making more under the pandemic insurance uh than they were when they were working. So there is a sense of urgency. Also, we are looking at our revenues. It's not something in the future. We are looking at both the long term. How do we reduce our staffing to what we know we need minimally? And then take it day by day or more accurately, more like year by year, because we know history tells us. This is going to be a long haul to get back to the numbers that we were. And so um, you know, you talk about having money that you can move from other lines. But in fact, the B fund is the one that helps support the D B fund each and every year, so you can have those lines. And we've reduced the um uh contribution from the D fund into the D B fund. Because we are already experiencing those decline in revenues and they're significant. We've been guided by the county, what our sales tax. Could potentially be, and that's for uh next year, but also will start happening each and every quarter. We've seen evidence of it. We're not just surmising uh what.
Robert, excuse me, Robert, it's a little hard to hear you with whatever that buzzing noise is.
Yeah, it's something to do with Teresa in her office and I don't know, I I've muted her now so that we don't have to hear that. And I'll unmute you. If she's got her hand up, she'd like to make another comment. And so I want to say about staffing, you know, reducing staffing in departments is difficult. We have been doing it over the years. Many of the departments have um not only been okay with it, there 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 hasn't been a a diminution of services. Um this is nothing new. It continues in some of the departments that we've had lowering of of services, uh sorry, lowering of of staffing. And so um I guess what we would say is that we would ask you to do your best to try. I know. Um, you know, in your highway department, um that it's uh not ideal to have uh less individuals. It's better to have more. But I do look at other, um and we do look at other townships and and neighboring Mylan. I mean, even after the reduction, we'll have more people than neighboring townships and granted, they have a few less miles, but they have some really challenging miles there as well. Um they don't have a a clerk uh to assist the uh highway superintendent there. And so uh similarly in in Rhinebeck, um they'll be at the same staffing level that we will be after these uh changes are made. And so I guess what we would say, and I can only speak for myself, is, you know, if things look better. We will look to uh to see if it's warranted to increase staffing. But we would ask all the departments to try, because this is where the significant cost is in the staffing related stuff. We know that. Um to try to, you know, to to do your best with the resources that we can provide, because we absolutely cannot raise taxes. On people when we have this type of the worst, the worst economic hit that this country has taken. Uh that we've known. So that's what I would uh say. Does anybody else want to uh chime in? Okay.
Teresa does.
Alright, Teresa, uh did you want to say uh? Teresa? Hang on.
Yes, um when you started your conversation, you said town government has to make decisions. I always considered myself part of town government.
Yeah.
In this particular decision, I was excluded and this hits my department the hardest. That's number one. Number two, comparison to other towns is not realistic. We have eleven thousand people in the town of Red Hook and Mylan has five thousand people. We have sixteen cul-de-sacs that take hours to clear and Mylan has none. We have developments, Mylan has none. When you're comparing, you need to compare apples to apples. We are not Mylan, we are Red Hook. We have a level of service that I intended to continue. And it does save money in the long run for everyone. But if you insist on doing this, as I'm going to read in my report later, I can't control the weather. And I can't control disasters. And it doesn't matter if you're saving money when you're putting people's lives at risk. And and cutting the department by two people in this sudden manner, two people in this sudden manner is, in my opinion, putting people at risk. And whether I not or not, I have the power to stop it, that remains to be seen. And whether or not this will be a successful move on the part of the town board, it depends on the winter.
Okay. Thank you.
Not much I can say. Um I I want to see uh what happens in the future. And um as I said in my report, which I do intend still to read.
Yeah.
Um the town board and the town supervisor have to take the responsibility for this action. When and not if, when the level of services suffers. During any disaster, we are essential workers, we are first responders, we are delivering important services. This is want. This is need, not want.
Right, well, again.
We see, we see the red car, we see the 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 support for the electric vans coming up. We see all of the money spent on bonds. Um and and this is a need, but if you if you are uh going to make this resolution and include those two men. Losing money.
Yeah, thank you Teresa. And I would say, um, you know, obviously, we're working on shared services agreements. We have a a bill of.
Sorry, but.
Yeah, wait, may I, may I finish my comments?
Sure you can.
Okay. And so one of the things that we've been asking you to consider, which you haven't considered over the years, or you refuse to do. Is to um do the shared services with the county. We drive over um roads that are not plowed. In order to get to roads that we do plow. They've offered fifty two hundred dollars a mile. That could literally pay for an entire employee. I realize that that might increase. Um, you know, uh might increase some overtime necessary, um increase the routes. But it's certainly something that I would suggest that you take a look at if you believe that we need another individual in in that department. And then I'll 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 take another minute and and ask you to please respond to that. And then I think we need to. And then I'll 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 take another minute and and ask you to please respond to that, and then I think we need to take up the resolution.
Sure, so um when you had proposed the shared services and the county uh wanted us to take on their responsibility for their roads. Um and share the liability in case of um an accident, which is what happened years ago and why the department no longer shared services with the county. When I did the math, um the net average was thirteen thousand dollars for the entire snow season. And you would have had to add two men and two trucks in order to do the mileage, the twenty miles that they had asked. And and that's a separate discussion, we're not talking about the county, how can you share services when everybody's suffering? Our shared services is still sidelined, it's just about what our department does in Red Hook, what we have done in Red Hook. We lost um an employee a few years ago due to reductions. We we tried to um stay within the budget, we increased the fund balance, but you're not going to replace manpower. It's not going to work, so so time will tell. I just want the 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 residents to know and the town board to know. That in order to um have a level of service that we have, we have to have the crew we have. And that it is not uh just a twenty five percent reduction. And I I think that you're not doing a service to the taxpayers by not getting their opinion on what they want to see. In in the coming storm season.
Well, thank you very much, Teresa, and we certainly can take up the issue before the coming storm season uh later this this year. Okay.
Robert, um if I if I could just jump in, um you know, I I do want to say. That these types of decisions are never easy. And um I know for myself, and I'm I'm sure the rest of the board members um will can chime in, um you know. There was very uh a deliberate process on my part to review the information. Presented to look at, you know, the information that we were getting on the financial front, to take into account, as Robert mentioned. That there are some programs, uh special programs in place right now, you know, the pandemic unemployment insurance. That could be helpful to um anyone who was affected by these decisions with reduced hours or um. Removed positions, cut positions. So you know, all of that certainly came into play on the decision making of this, and it was not done lightly. Um I think I I'm I'm sure that the rest of the board feels the same way, but I'm I'm not going to try to put words in their mouths. Again, there's always the opportunity for um, you know, to to get more information and to keep looking. But you know, at some point, you have to make a decision and having. Been involved with the town for many years on a volunteer side and seeing cuts. That happened, you know, year after year and everybody being asked to please come up with something and. So you know, there was always, you know, contributions, as Sue was mentioning, of people getting together and sitting down and and um, you know. Stipends were cut, travel was cut, and you know, uh supplies were cut. And I've, you know, unfortunately, I think we're at the point where, you know, we've we have looked over the years, many administrations have. Been very good at looking at cutting where they could and pretty much, you know, a lot of. Smaller things, if that's the right word for it. Which unfortunately means that now we're only left, we have to, we have to make big cuts in fewer areas. And um you know, some of these cuts have to go to staffing. Many of these positions come with um. It's not just the salaries, as I think Teresa mentioned, you know, there there are health insurance payments, as Robert mentioned, there are retirement fund payments. So there's a lot that has uh come along with these that are repeating costs. And again, as Robert said, you know, this is not something that is going to unfortunately, you know, fix itself in six months. And so for us to, you know, attempt to be out in front of it, I think is important and to have to be, you know, realistic about. What is already the situation? And what may be coming down the road for next year and potentially even the year after that.
Right.
Now, you said you had a very tough decision to make, I'm curious to know when this town board met to make decisions.
So Sue, I I'd like the town board to have an opportunity to just to to.
Well, I just asked a question, Robert.
Yeah, I understand, so.
You know what, when we were talking about Oriole Mills Road, you let the public go on for two hours, for two.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 simple, we had, you know, the the last meeting, we, so the meeting before that, you know, we had discussions about what was coming. Possibilities in reduced income, the board asked.
I mean, you actually sat down.
The board asked.
We're not, we're not, we're not gonna have an argument, we're not gonna have an argument here, the town board members are going to be allowed to talk and then we're gonna take a vote on the resolution.
Okay, so I just want to say that we did, we asked for numbers for a twenty five percent reduction to see what that would mean, we got the numbers, I know I reviewed them all. And then they were presented and at our last meeting, so.
I uh, this is Bill, I'd also like to say. I've been on both the receiving and giving end of one of these situations, when I worked for the federal government, I was one of the few federal employees ever to be. Let go in a reduction in force. Congress in its infinite wisdom cut the budget by thirty five percent from my agency, which meant we had to go from fifty two hundred people to thirty five hundred people. And I was one of those in and I, so I I am very sensitive to the issue of how it affects people. I had a three week old baby when it happened and I got a pink slip and um. It it was tough, it was hard, so I'm sensitive to what it does, you know, the personal effect. At the same time, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure we don't spend money we don't have, to make sure that. We can, you know, keep the keep the services going and um do the best we can do. My expectation, uh I'm not happy about this, but it is what it is. But my expectation is as a as a taxpayer, not just a town board member, is that, you know, we'll do what we have to do to work the hardest we have to work and to cooperate. And get along and and try to make it work and we will closely examine how that is. You know, as a taxpayer, I expect all public servants to to, you know, give you a a fair day's work for an honest day's pay. And um. I'm I'm very concerned, but I want to see what we can do about this. And I think Teresa's right, time will tell, uh but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to, I don't have a crystal ball. Um and I can't see what's going to happen and I do know that in times of crisis, people will do pull together, we've pulled together in this COVID crisis as a state. Um as a county and as a town, and I would expect the same going down the road. And if the winter time comes and we have a bad winter, uh we'll have to go and look at our options, but we do have reserve funds for a reason. I I don't disagree with Teresa that we're facing an emergency, but right now, we're not facing an emergency of having to plow roads. So we are in a bit, we're in a slightly better position to be able to make decisions uh for the long term. And I I hope that that people understand that, you know, this is not a fun thing to have to go through for anybody. In government service, either on the giving or the receiving end of it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other town board members like to make some comments? Okay. If not, I'd like to take up a resolution number twenty four.
Teresa has her hand up.
I know, but I we need to move on, I'm sorry.
I just want to make one more comment, I'm short. The thing that I'm disappointed about is the process.
Okay.
Not include the department head of the department where you were going to make the deepest cuts. Prior to coming up with your reductions. There were other options that could have been explored, but they were all um done by you without any input from me. Who knows my department best? And I appreciate the fact that you're trying to get them the six hundred dollars for the month of July. But the loss of health benefits for them and their family is going to cost a lot more than that.
Okay, and I and and just quickly respond to that, that the New York Health Exchange is open, they have an open period that expires June fifteenth. Where people pay um according to what um their ability is and that will um provide them with with health insurance. Okay, uh it's resolution number twenty four, would somebody like to move it, please?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, I. Bill Hamel, Christine, Jacob Estha.
Um, yeah.
Bill O'Neil? Bill, are you muted? Where are you, Bill? Did we lose Bill?
Bill's been gone for a while.
He's muted right now.
He is, Bill.
You just gotta unmute him. You have to unmute him, Robert.
I. No, it's not me, it's him.
Okay, Bill, you gotta unmute your.
Down your.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay. Bill, your vote, please.
I.
Okay. So the resolution passed as number twenty four. Okay, we have uh Town of Red Hook social media policy. This is a re- a revision that we had asked for at our last meeting, we've been discussing this a couple of years, but certainly more more recently in the last couple of meetings. And um did you have any questions about the, you should have a clean and a uh black line or rather red line version? Let me uh move on to that, by the way. Here we are. So we wanted to make a change so that we um understood that the the uh social media would be more. An extension of what we already have with our notification process, but it would be shared on Facebook or maybe some other platforms as well. But we were going to start with Facebook and so we needed to make that change to the social media uh policy. Is there any questions? Did those changes come through? As you expected, did you have any further comments, anyone on on whether or not to?
No.
Okay. So um we have a resolution number twenty five dated June third. It's approving the Town of Red Hook social media policy. And I so move, is there a second?
Second.
Pick one.
All in favor? I.
I.
Christine, I, Jacob, I.
I.
Bill O'Neil, I, Bill Hamel.
I.
All five, thank you very much. Uh moving right along, we have number. Uh agenda item number six, uh we have some change orders. Rec Park, I think I mentioned, the Rec Park is coming along nicely. Some of the change orders um. Were already approved. On West and we have uh resolution twenty six. For eleven thousand dollars. And you have the documents for the specifics of that. In addition, I would like you to look at the schedule I mentioned, um the schedule to you.
You need to scroll down again.
Oh, thank you very much. That's the red line version, don't get dizzy at home. Okay, that's the resolution, um here are some of the uh. Dates. As you know, COVID has had an impact upon our schedule, a dramatic impact upon the schedule. We are looking at substantial completion um on uh Rec Park West. Phase one now of July fifteenth, so middle of the month, so uh you heard me earlier reference that we wouldn't be ready for June twenty ninth for. A summer rec program anyway, the new date is for July fifteenth. Rec Park East Phase Two, we don't have yet and in part because we have um. The fencing um is looking like a seven or eight week lead time from today. And so that could actually happen um later on in the summertime. So the uh parking area, they did the paving, by the way, the other day when we were there doing the inspection. That would be Monday, um so you can take a look at that. As well, so. Substantial completion July fifteenth and then typically you allow another thirty days for a punch list, uh final completion around August fifteenth. So um we'd like you to give some thought about how you might envision if these dates do hold and if the construction work is. Finished, how we might be able to open our park and yet um you know, have some sort of. A very small presence to help uh make it safe for folks and to uh see whether or not we can implement some type of social distancing. And maybe uh you know, some type of uh cleaning protocol, we'll need to come up with a plan. And so um those are the dates on the Rec Park East uh project. Any questions? We have. So it's resolution twenty six dated June third. Authorizing change orders for Rec Park Phase One East and Rec Park Phase One West. And you know, the major change that happened on West was in the field there, they want a skinned field so they can get more utility out of it, they can play Little League and softball. Uh off that field and if you have not um seen the field, um you know, we should, we should organize a uh. A visit once they're done with that process, so you can take a look, um a lot of the work. Has been uh done on that field, now it needs to sit for a few seasons before it's playable. Okay, uh resolution twenty six and I so move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill Hamel?
I.
Bill O'Neil?
I.
Christine?
I.
Jacob?
I.
Myself. The last uh item on the regular agenda is for. The Community Preservation Fund, there's some of the uh. Diagrams for the fields. And more of the detail what you have for your change orders. Public hearing for our next meeting, um we've had this on the um meeting docket now several times of the project. And at last uh we met, we had the recommendation to go ahead and fund. A limited amount, uh most of it is being funded by the county and Sina Hudson. A limited amount to preserving the Moser Farm, uh folks may recognize uh the Moser Farm as being the first farm on the left as you come through Rhinebeck. And you make that turn on Route nine, off in the distance, you'll see those beautiful flat fields. And then uh it says Brittany Hollow, I believe, at the the uh colonial near Route nine. And so um this project is to permanently preserve that farm. And so we we had some tweaking of the numbers, Chris Shaw uh was working with Duchess Land Conservancy, who's also a partner to the project. To um go over those uh funding numbers. And for the folks at home, this comes out of that dedicated uh community preservation fee that. New homeowners, new residents pay if they buy a property above the county median, there's a small surcharge that gets added to that. So it's dedicated stream, um it's recommended uh in the plan to preserve this property for its agricultural, its water resources, historic. And um also gateway, obviously gateway is very important for this property. And so um the revised uh schedule that you see, we had a draft one initially as the town portion.
Can you scroll down, Robert?
Oh, thank you very much. Here it is, so here's the breakdown, estimated total cost of three hundred and thirty six thousand to permanently protect these sixty acres. This is one of those unique farms that um actually crosses uh town borders. So there's a small portion that's also in Rhinebeck, we will not be contributing towards that portion. For obvious reasons, we'll just be funding the uh forty seven odd acres that are in Red Hook and the breakout is down at the bottom there. So the county uh contribution is a hundred and forty one thousand seven fifty, the. So the county contribution is 141,750, the town portion 94,675. Seen it cuts in 78,875. There's some in kind, which is DLC. And then a little bit of actual cash from DLC. And so that's what we have in front of us. We'll have Aaron Hogland from Duchess Land Conservancy with us on the 24th, so she can just give a little bit of a presentation. But you have in front of you also is a short environmental assessment form, a part one. And I hope you've had a chance to review it. You know, obviously, the environmental impact of preserving the farm is, is all positive. So it's, it's a short form and will contribute to ecological and other characteristics. So that's something that will be for the public to comment on is the EAF, as well as the application and other details associated with the project. Are there any questions before we set the public hearings for our next meeting on the 24th?
No.
That's next meeting, the 24th?
The 24th, June 24th.
What happened to the ninth?
Yeah, well, we'll get to that. We will get to that before the end of the meeting, but the thinking is that we've accomplished a lot of what we would have accomplished for a meeting on the ninth, and that's just six days away. So I'm going to propose that we just have the June 24th meeting, and we wouldn't have enough time to notice the next meeting, this public hearing for CPS. So since it's been mentioned, the town board, are you okay with that schedule of June 24th? I know. Yeah?
I'm okay.
Okay, great. So resolution now 27. Calls for a public hearing on June 24th. And let's call the time at 7:35, shall we? And we'll be joined by Aaron Hogland from Duchess Land Conservancy.
Robert.
Oh, the resolution says 7:45, yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll do 7:45 and keep the resolution as is.
Just to make sure that we are able to have our meeting ready and going for the public to be able to participate by then, right?
It always seems to. Even though I think we may be getting the hang of this, I have to say, it just, it doesn't seem to to happen quite, quite that easily. Okay, very good. Resolution 27, and I so move, is there a second?
Second.
Christine King. All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Bill O'Neil?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so yeah, there is one more thing, just a brief discussion. I was contacted by a resident who I'd met some time ago, who lives in the town of Red Hook, but lives right on the border of Mylan, that he had heard that the mine, the owners of the mine, the Rojan Mine on Odak Farm Road or off of Odak Farm Road, were applying to DEC for an expansion of that facility for processing, that they had certain materials, but not other materials supposedly. And so they were going to ask DEC for permission to import something like 15,000 tons or cubic yards of material to, to work with the other material that they have there at the site. And then have trucks not only bring, bring that material there, but trucks, the trucks depart from there. And the route that is suggested, you know, going across Spring Lake Road there and coming down Route 9 means that most of the impact from the trucking activities will be in the town of Red Hook. And so I reached out to the town of Mylan to receive, to take a look at some documents that they had, and they did send over some stuff, but not, not everything I don't think that they have in front of them. But I think it's incumbent upon us, since we always seem to be receiving the brunt of the truck traffic. And I should tell you that when Red Wing, and that's the owner of this mine, was proposing to have to start mining on a mine north in, I believe it's the town of Gallatin, just north of Elizaville. They had an application to do a new mine there. A mine that had a permit from, I think, back in the 60s. They spoke about where those trucks were going, and almost 90 plus percent of those trucks were headed down Southern County. So I don't know if they've indicated where the traffic is going for this proposal that they have. But suffice it to say that, you know, the village of Red Hook especially always seems to bear the brunt of, you know, a lot of the trucking traffic. It doesn't seem to be sort of spread out evenly or fairly. And I think it's incumbent upon us to get involved in this and see if we can understand what, what the potential impact would be. And to ask to become an involved agency at the very least. So Chris Shaw, do you, could you speak to this issue for, for a second, what our options may be?
Well, I think that, that the, the only documentation we have so far is a notice to lead agencies that was provided to not Red Hook, but Mylan and Claremont and Livingston. So, you know, we would have to obtain those materials that was distributed to them to understand the proposal. And then I think we would have to review the proposal. I don't know that they would consider you an involved agency because you don't have an approval right with respect to this project. But you could ask to be considered an interested agency and offer your comments to be considered in connection with the environmental review, among other things, I mean, as a starting point. Involved agencies need to be agencies that have an approval right with respect to a project.
Right. I mean, it is interesting. I have on the screen. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
Who was included in this communication? And I just can't for the life of me understand why we weren't included because we're obviously much closer than some of these other communities, or certainly at least as close. Those of you who are familiar with Odak Farm Road and where the, the mine was. And certainly given where, where it's been indicated, the route, I'm, I'm actually quite surprised that DEC did not include us in, in these communications. And so I would like us to reach out to DEC and make sure that we are included. I would also like us to try to understand the proposal and to coordinate with the town of Mylan in particular, since the property is in, in Mylan proper. And see.
I don't have a, I, I think that makes sense. So do you need a motion or what for that? Or do you just need a consensus of the board?
I think a consensus of the board would be sufficient to try to gather information and to request involved agency status. What else would you recommend, Chris?
Well, I think you're going to have to decide if you are in a point where you want to engage, you know, your consultants to review the information that's available. I mean, it's, some of the other communities may already have taken steps to undertake a traffic study, for example. And, you know, you're going to want to decide whether that's something that you're going to want to do.
Well, do we, we don't, do we don't need to do that yet, though? I mean, we have to.
Well, I think, I think, but you might want your planning consultant to assist in reviewing this information.
That I could see, but I don't think we need to decide whether to do a traffic study.
No, 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 but as a starting point, I'm just saying, those are things that perhaps some of the other communities have already undertaken some of that.
Right.
I, I don't know that they're there yet. I, I have been in touch with Mylan. And, you know, what I, what I understand is that, you know, they're checking with their attorney to see if this type of expansion would even be allowed under their current zoning. As you know, there was many years ago, there was a change in their zoning that related to mining when a big proposal was in front of them. I think that was Red Wing also, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm not sure. And so they're looking to see whether or not this would be allowed. And so I think we would need to understand that as well. But, you know, when you read here about just, just the materials going to the site, that they anticipate 28 to 30 loads of sand and gravel per day. I don't know how many loads would leave. You know, you'd have contractors coming to get smaller loads and disperse throughout the community as well. They were looking at just, just for this one activity, three loads per hour, bringing materials to the site from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. So imagine, you know, every, every 20 minutes, one of these big rigs would be added to the, the already existing truck traffic that comes through the community. And obviously, we know we need mining materials for our community, for other communities. And the, the question is, is this really an appropriate way for them to be able to conduct their business, to actually, you know, take materials from somewhere else and bring it here and then distribute it from here? And let us have the impact for that, so.
Well, I would be in favor of us finding out more about it and, you know, allocating the, or having the planning consultant take a look at that materials.
I agree.
And, and we would want a message to DEC that we want to be included in all, all correspondence. And we would like to become an involved agency, I think, right, Chris? Or is it too soon for them?
You want to tell them, at least, at least you want to become an interested agency. To get, which means you get copied on all of the materials.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Very good. All right, thank you very much. We'll try to get through as quickly as we can. It's getting late. Some board reports. Christine, we have a planning board report for February, April, and May.
Right, so it's a, it's a three-month report, so I'll just try to go through it really quickly. So they have commenced or continued to review an application for change of business use on Route 9. An application to subdivide five and a half acres or so from a 60-acre parcel in the AB District on Route 199. An application to construct a helipad on a 17-plus acre parcel in the ABD District, also on Route 9. Application to subdivide 102-plus acres into four residential building lots. One of about eight acres, one of 30, one of 37 or so, one of 31, with two shared driveways, and that's in multiple districts, RD3, waterfront conservation, scenic corridor overlay, and environmental protection overlay. And that's at Sky Park on Route 199. And an application to remove approximately 35 trees from a, the property at Montgomery Place that Bard, oh, sorry, not Montgomery Place, Blackwood, that Bard has to recreate a scenic vista down to the river. And they also granted approval to an application involved with the Winnicke Land Trust parcel near Rec Park West, where it 1.36 acres of land had to be conveyed to a number, divided up and conveyed to a number of adjacent property owners that had, had encroachments over the years onto the parent parcel of 240-some acres. An application to construct a garage on a small parcel in Berrytown with a certificate of appropriateness. And an application to construct another garage on less than 100 feet from a DEC wetland in the RD3 zoning district on Spring Lake Road.
Okay, thank you very much, Christine. And, you know, it's striking to me, it's almost ironic that we have on, on this report, an application, and the folks should know, there's an application in front of the planning board for a heliport, helicopters landing across the street from Hanover and Conways. And yet, at the same time, there's an application in front of the planning board for a permitted airport that's been there now for decades, for residential subdivision. I just, I, I just thought it was worth noting, but the, the heliport across the street from Conways is something that I think people should be aware of. Okay, Bill Hamel, could you give us a, a brief synopsis of the water system report?
Certainly. There's really only two things I want to report. One of the last reports I gave, there was some confusion or concern about the gallons per minute that were being pumped out of the wells, both of them. Even though they were fairly confident that the number was wrong, they were both coming out at 145 gallons per minute. They did discover what the issue was, which was when they were doing a test of water, of being able to provide water to the village, they had shut down the valves for both of those at the same level. And once they opened them back up, the gallons per minute went to 195 for well number one and 190 for well number two. And the, and the reason there was some concern is you don't want to think that you're running out of water. So that issue resolved itself and all the other numbers, you know, turbidity and, and things of that nature are all good. The other issue from the water board is that Hank has asked us, the board, to consider changing the rate for reimbursement for occasional meter readings. And the occasional meter readings are, there are times when someone's home or business gets a meter reading, which is out of the normal cycle for one reason or another. And in the past, the occasional meter readings, they, because they require time and travel. And in the past, they were, they were getting $1.50 for a regular meter and $2 for a meter pit. And it's, it's extra time, there's extra travel involved with this because it's out of cycle, and the people who read our meters read other municipality readers, uh, meters. So they have asked us to consider raising the fee that must be paid for an occasional meter reading to $5. And while we don't have a resolution for tonight to, to vote on that, I wanted to present that to the board. So they would know that that's what the town water district is, is asking for.
Is there an estimate of what the additional cost might be? How, you know, just a rough estimate of how many times they need to go ahead and do that?
They did not give that to me, but prior to the pandemic, I sat in on some water board meetings. It doesn't happen that frequently, but the, the occasional meter readings will happen when there's either some kind of aberrant meter reading, or maybe someone suddenly is using a lot more water than was thought. Or there, there are issues that, or people are away and they can't get access to a meter because it's inside the residence. So it doesn't happen that often, but it does happen.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what I have to report on the water board.
Thank you, Bill, very much. Have you noted?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but is it possible for me to do my report next? I have to be at work at 6 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, sure, we can skip, we can skip the highway, sure. We, we are hearing significant background noise, just so you know, Chris. But yes, let's skip, let's skip to your report. We have your letters, which we've referenced. Give me one second. Okay.
Yes, basically, my report is the letters, and it may be redundant after the conversation, but I feel that it's important for the folks at home to understand the potential impacts of the layoffs in the Highway Department. So in order to understand the effects of the elimination for two positions in the Highway Department crew will have, I'm providing an outline of the services the Highway Department provides and comparing the current operating capacity with the proposed production capacity. For most people, it would seem that a 25% reduction would result in a corresponding level in the reduction of services. However, the Highway Department has been right-sized to offer maximum response in minimum time and has a built-in buffer for coverage during sick time and vacation time. Plowing operations. We currently have six plow truck operators, one small truck operator and one motor operator. We currently have six plow truck operators, one small truck operator and one loader operator. With reduction of staff, you will lose two plow truck drivers. Our normal plow time during an average storm is three and a half hours. Without two drivers, the routes can be extended by five miles each. Currently, our trucks carry enough sand and salt for one full round, which is twenty length miles. With an extension of the run, each truck will have to return to the garage to refill with salt and sand. This will mean four and a half to five hour runs. There can be as many as three to five runs per storm. More time for the snow to pile up, less time to keep up with the storm. The greater the snowfall, the longer the runs. The impacts will mean more snow on the roads for longer periods of time, increasing hazardous road conditions. Slower response time for ambulances, fire trucks and police vehicles. More school delays and closures and residents will be stuck at home or on the roads. All of this will have a snowball effect, and if you add in the possibility of one driver out sick, the department will be crippled. We have not yet had to pull our trucks off the road because we can't handle the conditions as they occur, but you should be prepared for that to happen. The loader operator stays behind and clears the parking lots, recycling garage and town hall. He distributes salt and sand to the village and keeps track of what is used and needs to be paid for. He is also the person who gets our trucks unstuck during a storm. And recently, we had a storm where each of our six vehicles needed rescuing. The alternative is to sit on the side of the road and wait for a tow truck and a blizzard. We could make a drive a plow truck, which would mean that each truck would have to load their own material at the yard, increasing response time even further and not have the option of being pulled out of a ditch when needed. Increased overtime, decreased response capability, higher costs all the way around. If the loader operator is in a truck, the town will be contracting out the parking lot clearing and sidewalk to an independent contractor and will be at the mercy of their schedule. Emergency storm response. With the increase in violent thunderstorms and hurricanes due to climate change, the highway department has taken on a bigger role during other weather events. Windstorms mean trees down and we have four two man crews with chainsaws ready to patrol and clear trees. It takes at least two people to get a tree off the road safely. You will reduce this response to three crews and during the months of April to November, the only time the staff can take their vacations, your three crews will become two. Having multiple trees down is not unusual and the longer it takes to respond, the longer the roads stay closed. Again, this will cause issues for other emergency vehicles and residents. Flooding is also a consideration. When the crew is reduced, then the clearing of storm drains, ditches and culvert pipes will slow down. Flooding can take the asphalt right off the road or cause extreme damage to a resident's home and property. In-house construction. A basic crew consists of an equipment operator, a truck driver, lease two laborers and two flaggers. Catch paving, pipe laying, culvert replacement and other operations require extra manpower. Anything we cannot do will have to be contracted out with the added cost of prevailing wage bidding and engineering. Contracted work can be difficult to schedule. Prevailing wage is usually three times what our crew makes per hour. And the contractor has a special interest in their own cost savings. When our crew does work on our roads, they have a vested interest in the quality of the work. They are held responsible by the taxpayers and they are around to witness the results of their efforts. They take pride in their work. Other considerations are the work that the crew does for the other departments in the town. The town can ask the highway department to do work outside of the highway duties only if it does not interfere with fulfillment of the first priority, work and the DB fund. Reducing the staff will effectively eliminate the duties to the other departments. This will include landscaping and mowing of the town hall and recycling area, hauling materials for the wreck parts, cemetery and St. Margaret's, workforce labor for special projects such as the intended septic system installation at Rec Park West, building maintenance and other services performed at the town hall, plowing, sanding and salting of the parking lots at recycling in the town hall and snow removal from the town hall sidewalks. A final thought about staff reduction has to do with the increased burden of work left to the remaining crew. Our department is not made up of young men and there are three nearing retirement age in the near future. There will be no labor buffer to make up for extended time in plow trucks and the work needed during routine maintenance. Those fewer men to do the work will increase the probability of injury and exhaustion, workers' compensation claims and use of sick time. This will be a downward spiral and the ones who will suffer the most will be the residents who pay taxes with the assumption that there is an appropriately staffed highway department who will take care of their needs. If you choose to continue with the layoff plan instead of looking for cost savings in other parts of the highway budget, you will do so with the full knowledge of the potential consequences. This document will become a matter of record and will also serve as a template of a letter that I will be obligated to send to the town residents to let them know that we cannot deliver the level of service they are used to with the reduction in staff that you are seeking. You, the supervisor in the town board, have full responsibility for creating what may be a very serious problem in the near future. In the highway department, we are always preparing for the next storm. We're due for a big one. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of fuel. The cost of keeping two men employed is nothing compared to the cost of liabilities due to a skeleton staff. And the report has to do with my clerk Lori Pierce. I figured if each of the clerks in the town hall were reduced by a half an hour, she would get her six hours back. But instead, her reduction, not twenty five percent, went from sixteen hours to six hours. So I'm asking that my clerk Lori Pierce have her hours reinstated to at least seventy five percent of her original hours. She's been working sixteen hours per week in the highway department for the last three years. Her position is at the will of the board and paid out of the A fund. The town board decided to reduce employment by twenty five percent, but my clerk's hours have been cut by sixty percent, which leaves her with six hours a week. At the same time, other departments have suffered no mandatory reductions or layoffs from the part time hours that were in place on May twelfth. I have attached a list of the highway clerk's daily, weekly and monthly responsibilities. I do not see how the work can be accomplished efficiently and accurately with the deep reduction. My understanding is that there is a floater position at the town hall that has been created in the past two years in order to help other departments. This will not benefit the highway department as the systems and procedures we have established are very specific to the work we do. Any person stepping into Lori's position will need extensive training. And with only six hours a week just to manage the oversized workload, there will be no time to do so. Simply put, for close to the same hourly wage, we can have a person who is dedicated to our department and has vast understanding of the budget billouts and records, or we can spend precious time training a junior clerk who may not be available to us when we need them. Often, part timers who do not get benefits will leave a position that does not support their needs. If I were my clerk, I would feel so as being pushed out the door. Highway clerk's position is integral to the town in terms of timely billing, record keeping for FEMA, accuracy and payroll, creating informational documents for our website and a host of other duties involved in managing the biggest portion of the town's budget. Over the past ten years, paperwork has increased and the clerk's hours have kept pace. If you need to take back hours to save money, then I would hope that you would take an even handed approach based on critical need qualifications and seniority. And not have one or two departments bear the bulk of the burden of the staffing reductions that you have proposed. I thank you very much for your time. You guys have a wonderful evening. Take care.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you for your comments. And I just took a couple of quick responses. Obviously, you know, we, we hope that this level of staffing will be sufficient, but I'm sure you'll let us know if it's not. And we'll, we'll continue to monitor the situation and see if it needs to be addressed. Again, I will reference that other municipalities are operating with this level of staffing after the reduction or less. And, you know, as far as a highway clerk, Town of Midland doesn't have a highway clerk. And I guess what I would say is, you know, let's, let's try and find out what they're doing that's making it work. Cause I, you know, I understand in the Town of Midland, they're very happy with their, their highway operations. Again, as you've said, each municipality is unique. So let's see what we can do. We do share the highway garage with the village. They have several employees. I know that there are, you know, there's certainly a willingness on, on behalf of the mayor and the mayors, frankly, and actually adjoining municipalities on doing shared services. And so we'd wanna work with the unions to see what's, you know, something that they can support. But, you know, there are other individuals sharing our highway garage and let's see if that's a possibility as well. And so as we come up upon the next budget season, which really isn't that far away, we can again, take a look at all of these things just to see where we stand. So thank you very much for your time and for your, your comments. Okay, so more department reports. Building and zoning, I think, I know we were on dog control. Bill Hamel. We had more than.
Sorry, I was muted again.
No, that's fine. Actually, we have, before we do dog control, I apologize. Bill O'Neill, we never got to your zoning board of appeals monthly report.
I don't have one.
Oh, you don't? Ah, you should in your attachments. Here we go. I'm gonna put it up there for you. Hang on. Don't get dizzy, people.
Should be page eleven.
There it is, Bill. Can you see it, Bill?
Well, the board met on May thirteenth at the regular meeting. And they had a public hearing on the application for an area variance to construct an addition on a parcel. And the meeting commenced at seven. Scrolling up. And I'm not so sure it was completed.
It continued. Yeah, it looks like it's continued to June tenth. That would be next one.
They had the full hearing, but it's continued to conclude on June the tenth, twenty twenty. And it's reviewable at RH, the Red Hook Zoning Board of Appeal Meeting YouTube channel.
Okay.
That's the report.
Very good. The next report, I guess, is for me, is the assessor's office, June third, twenty twenty. On May twenty sixth, grievance day was held over Zoom, another function that we now have to do remotely. The assessor thanks Matt Feneroli, who hosted the Zoom meeting and made the meeting run very smoothly. We had forty five grievance applications, but twenty seven of them were from the Tradition Development, twenty five Old Farm Road. She speaks about how she met. I think her, her concept of met is on the phone or through emails, meetings to discuss their current assessments and did ten stipulations. The bar will be meeting tomorrow as, to start their deliberations on those applications. And she is working very hard to finalize her role, her final role, July first, twenty twenty. It's been challenging working with COVID nineteen, although she says working remotely has been helpful. And we have heard that from some of our departments that actually the remote working is, is actually cutting down on the time. She's been attending county assessor meetings through conference call, and that's also been working for her. And there have been sixteen sales or worse, sixteen sales in the month of March, right when the COVID broke out, eleven in town. And Village of Tivoli had one and the Village of Red Hook had four. And then she just thanks everyone for their support. Okay, Bill Hamel, we have building and zoning.
Could you scroll up a little bit?
Yeah, you, you wanna say a lot more than?
Yeah, well, there were nine. I, I didn't see it actually. There, it says, it's very clear, there were nineteen permits given, eight inspections done, seven certificates of occupancy and sixty one hundred and fifteen dollars in revenue generated.
And then there's a whole list of reports. If folks wanna know, we get reports of every application. And I'm gonna just quickly scroll through this because it's got names and addresses and I don't think we, we really should be.
And I don't generally report on that. I try to report on just sort of the aggregate of how much work they've done.
Right. It is a matter of, of record, however, just so you know. Okay. And let's get through it. Wow, we have, we have all the detail. Inspection, see those. And I apologize if you're getting dizzy or nauseous at home. As I scroll through to the next item, we've done highway. We're now at police. Bill O'Neill, the police report.
Well, if you scroll up the police report.
Okay.
Bottom of the report.
Is there, is there a list of, in the beginning or the end? There we go. No, there's, well, did I miss it?
You went past it.
Did I?
Yep, you're going too fast.
I apologize. Okay. So this is, these are all the.
Okay, so for the reporting period, there were a total of a hundred and eight incidents reported to the police. But they didn't issue any tickets and I'm not sure how many arrests they made.
Yeah. So when we talk about loss of revenue, you know, this is just one of many lines that we're not seeing. The revenue that we would have otherwise seen. Okay, we are next up, and I apologize, I'm gonna go through this police report one more time, just to make.
It's, this is the one for May, actually. The other one was for April.
Okay.
So there are numbers at the bottom for arrests and stuff for this one.
For May. Okay, school security check. We have no tickets here either in May. A hundred and thirty seven incidents.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that a six or an eight?
It's a five, right?
It's a five on arrests, yeah.
Five arrests.
Right. So that's two months without ticket revenue. Okay, Jacob, can you give us summation of Economic Development Committee? And boy, what a, what a task they have in front of them.
Yeah. So the EDC has continued to meet weekly, as I have for essentially the full year at this point. A lot of, so we have minutes dating back to May thirteenth. There's been a lot of discussion about reopening plans and the different phases from the state and how that affects, you know, businesses locally. There's been, you know, updates on Red Hook responds and the work that's been done there. Ed from the village has been talking about the sewer project and progress that's been made there. There's been discussion of potentially having a an event, like a virtual event kind of to take the place of something like what hard scrabble might be, something that's a community event that is more accessible and has a little bit less, you know, in-person contact, but still reaches out across the community. And that would be volunteer driven. Yeah, I, I mean, it's been a really tough time for a lot of local businesses, as everybody knows. So that, that committee has been talking about ways to support the local businesses, to get information out about hours for different businesses, services that are available that are, you know, for companies that are still open. And that work continues. It's, there's a lot of energy behind trying to ensure that the businesses in the community are still supported.
Sorry, Jacob.
Yeah, sorry. I, I was over on my own PDF kind of scrolling through as well. So. Yeah. So I think, I think those are the, the highlights. I mean, the, the focus has really been the coronavirus and plans for reopening now that we're at the point where we're getting into the different phases. And really, you know, you'll see some of the minutes is like the anticipation of hitting the different metrics. And now we're actually in, you know, phase one. So as that continues, more and more things will be allowed to operate in an expanded capacity. And we'll, you know, the conversation will continue in ways to ensure that the Red Hook economy continues to try to recover from the impact of the virus.
So since you're speaking about the different phases, I thought I would throw up the, the phases and the activities that. and the activities that are permitted in those phases. And one of the changes that came out of the governor's office, I think this morning, was moving up outdoor dining to phase two. So as you see, restaurants and food services were originally scheduled for phase three. And now will be permitted as soon as Tuesday in our region, Mid Hudson region. And so if you see work being conducted, especially within the village, to expand options for folks to get food in restaurants and bring it to an outdoor location. The Baywright family is trying to, in fact successfully has put up a tent out front of their brick old telephone building. And so they've, they've put some tables out there as well. So you will start to see as soon as next week, folks eating outdoors. We would like to remind everyone to please be very careful. Social distancing, wear those masks. Please take it seriously when you're outside. You know, we, we are very concerned about everybody's health. We're very concerned about everybody's business. You know, backsliding, if we were to have to stop the reopening phases, that would be really detrimental for a lot of our local businesses. And I'm sorry, Jacob, I interrupted you, but I wanted folks to see what the different phases and the potential dates for when those phases would open.
Yeah, I think that I was basically done at that point. So it's helpful to see, you know, what will be continuing. Yeah.
And we keep, we keep working on trying to amalgamate, collect all the information for all our local businesses and figure out if we can get a central location, website, something. We've got a list now that we've been working with the chamber, because we really wanna make sure then when when commerce does start to open up, that people have easily at their fingertips, all of our local businesses, how to reach them, where they're located, what, what activity they have. Because we recognize that, especially now, there's gonna be great sensitivity to making sure that those dollars are spent locally and keeping those, those businesses open. And now you look at, when we're talking about the economy, you look at, you know, some of what's going on in the cities and the destruction of the storefronts and so on and so forth, and what that economic impact is gonna be as well. Anyway, so yeah, we wanna make sure that we can connect the dots for our residents so they can go ahead and support their local businesses. Okay, I'm going to stop this and go back to go back to where were we?
We're on recreation next.
Recreation, thank you, Jacob. All right.
That's me, I guess.
Okay, and I'll, I'll get there. I'm sorry. There's a lot of meeting minutes. Here we go.
I think it's page sixty-four.
Yeah, got it.
You ready? Okay.
Got it. There you go.
Okay, so this is the record, committee report from May eleventh. And as we mentioned, or Robert meant at the top of the program, there is not going to be a summer rec program this year. So there's a, was a, this meeting had a lot of the details about what would need to be done and how that could be accomplished and whether we could accomplish them and can, you know, lots of concerns about whether you can really social distance with small children and sanitizing bathrooms and all of that. So we'll just kind, and a lot of the other information we have also touched on in the reports that came, or the updates, I guess, that were given on the field work at Rec Park West and some of the things that are also happening at Rec Park East, when we were talking about the resolutions that we did earlier. The, the rec staff continues to work on some more, I guess, general maintenance sort of issues about cleanup at Rec Park East along the fence lines. And, you know, preparing, we have some tree issues, dead, dead, dead dangerous trees, so preparing to get those taken care of when whatever phase that type of work falls into when we get to that. Also some prep for future projects around lighting and security, so we can get those together too. And, you know, the tennis courts are seeing good use. The skate park is being used basically, I guess, at all hours. Not too much happened on the pickleboard, pickleball courts. Maybe their location, so maybe people don't realize they're there. Although all of this is premised on the fact that the parks are technically closed because of the construction that's happening. But the tennis court and the pickleball court and skate park are, are kind of separate from the area where the construction is happening. So, and people, I guess people feel comfortable to go in there. But please follow the directions for parking, because some areas have been reseeded. So, and, you know, and they're marked off, so, you know, park where it's allowed and where the directions, the signage and whatnot are up. So, there you go.
Okay, and then I think you have, you've covered it all. Thank you very much. And then we have a, and I apologize if you're watching this at home, you've probably gotten dizzy at this point. But just to give you some idea, the comprehensive reports that we get out of the rec mission.
We have some great minute takers and.
Tremendous, tremendous amount of work. It's amazing when they get accomplished.
It's, yeah.
If you wanna, if you wanna detailed read of them, they're available on the town website.
There's binders that, you know, I think are now going to crush the bookshelves that are on there so many. Tree Preservation Commission Report, Jacob.
Yeah, so the tree commission did not meet in April or May because of the coronavirus. There was communication over email texts and telephone. A handful of trees were planted around town. Including, you know, a couple were delivered, delivered around town and then a few were planted, including at the Old Dutch Village Garden Club, West Curly Corners Road, and then, yeah, around that area. So I think there were seven total trees that were planted and the committee, you know, obviously with the restrictions as a result of the virus, we did not have any Arbor Day celebration. The committee hopes to have that celebration in the fall, but obviously be depending on, you know, progress being made between now and then. But, you know, still a lot of good energy around, you know, preserving trees in Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jacob. And so before we conclude tonight's meeting, just a reminder that we'll have our next regularly scheduled meeting, June twenty-fourth at seven thirty. I will advise you, however, because our rec projects are moving forward rather rapidly in June, it's quite likely that we may need to have a special meeting, a very brief special meeting to approve any kind of change orders. There typically seem to be change orders happening on a fairly frequent basis, so look for that as well.
Hey, Robert.
Okay, on that note, yeah, Bill?
There was an animal control report that was submitted, but it was submitted late today before Jackie got to scan it in.
Okay.
There's really not much to report.
Okay, could you report though, and maybe just talk very briefly about, you know, working to, to maybe update our, our laws surrounding dogs and dangerous dogs in particular?
Well, there really was no activity in March, which was good news. In April, the humane officer got a call about some mini horses that were reported in questionable condition. But I haven't been able to follow up since I just got this report this, late this afternoon, what the result was. And then in May was very quiet. There were some loose dogs that were reported, but they got home by the time the officer replied. So the good news is, you know, there hasn't been a lot. I did get a, there's a new chief humane officer who, the former fellow who we met has moved on and they've hired somebody else. And I'm trying to schedule a meeting to meet him. But at the meantime, I also got an email that I shared regarding what is believed to be a loophole in our code that made it, there was an incident last year, I guess it's word in May now, it might have been, it might have been in December, where somebody had a dog on a leash, but it was on a really long leash. And the dog was able to go into a neighbor's property and bite somebody. And so the way the code was written, they believed at the D S B C A that it wasn't written in a manner that would have allowed them to cite that dog owner. So they did submit some suggested language that I'd like our council to take a look at and for us to consider an update either at the next meeting or a meeting thereafter.
Sure. And you'll, you'll, excuse me, add that to the recommendations, I think Sarah and Boden had, working with our attorney to the town, updating our dangerous dog regulations and fees. Cause I think we, we, we really need to get that addressed sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I wanna thank everybody. And at this time, I would make a motion to close the meeting. All in favor, Jacob?
I, second, 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 I'll second it, I, yeah. All right.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Please be safe out there. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.